Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Preciding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the February 16th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Kater.
Here.
Vice Chair Bashir Tash.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomis.
Here.
Commissioner Neal. Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the sitting Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on Seeing no speakers on items for tonight's agenda, does anyone in the audience wish to address commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Bashir Tash, may...do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
And Chair Kater, I would just like to let the record reflect that Commissioner Neal arrived at 5:32.
Fantastic. Thank you. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Wade abstaining.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearings. Please note if the item is not removed by commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item for separate Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item for separate Seeing none at this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. Please...
I just had a question on one item.
Yes.
Sorry.
Oh, no worries.
It's Item C.
5C?
Yes.
Would you like to remove it for separate consideration?
Yes, I just want to ask a question. It may be very quick.
Okay. Should we move it or just ask the question?
It's okay if she asks the question.
But before you ask the question, I was going to state that I have a conflict of interest on Item 5C and will abstain from voting, so should I remove myself for the question? Or...
Well, if we're going to remove it to a public hearing, then yes.
Then I would yes. Okay. So are we removing it or are we asking?
We're just...we're going to allow her just to ask the question.
It's regarding one of the maps, and it's regarding the exit onto Cottonwood.
We probably should remove it.
And I...and now that there's a school right there, I don't see a traffic light right there. So going into that, so I think the proper thing to do is to remove it.
For here? Yes.
Let's remove it.
Okay. I was feeling like I should jump out of my chair and run to the back. Leaving Commissioner. All right. Well, then, thank you, Commissioner Neal. We will move Item 5C to the public hearing portion of the agenda. So at this time, the consent public hearing items 5A, B, and D are now closed. May I get a motion? May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items 5A, B, and D?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal.
And a second.
Commissioner Bashir Tash, may I...Commissioners, please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Motion passes with Item 5C being removed from consent.
Ms. King, should I...okay, thank you.
Agenda Item 6.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak, those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Vice Chair Bashir Tash, you may want to have a show of hands if anybody is opposed to the project. If not, I'm going to forego the presentation and we can get right to the question.
I'd kind of like to hear the presentation.
Okay. That's fine. I will ask Principal Planner Jenny Ng to provide a presentation on this item.
Good afternoon. My name is Jenny Ng. The city planning committee. The besting tentative track map 7405 is located on the northwest corner of East Panama Lane and Cottonwood Road. It consists of 202 single-family lots, a sump lot, and various landscaping lots on 46.18 acres. It is a single...it is one-family dwelling zone property. On May 19th of 2022, the item was referred back to staff at the request of the applicant so that the applicant may have further review regarding odor and noise mitigation. And then this was scheduled for a public hearing on February 2nd and were...and referred back to staff for additional review provided by the applicant. The proposed tentative track typical lot size is about 6,000 square feet, but the range is from 6,000 to 12,500 square feet, and the net density is 6.34 units per net acre, which is consistent with land use designation of low-density residential. In reference to the additional information the applicant provided, it was an updated noise and odors...a noise study and an odor study related to an egg farm that was located northeast of the project that is no longer in operation. So the original noise studies, noise and odor study were done in 2006. So the updated studies were to determine if there were any new significant environment impacts or if the mitigation associated with the 2006 studies applied to the current application. Staff reviewed the studies and has prepared an addendum to the adopted negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, and amended the mitigation, which reduced...which reflects the reduction in any impacts related to noise and odor. And those are included in your conditions of approval attached to the resolution. Staff has received no written public comments, and staff is recommending approval with conditions shown in the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and then proceed.
Hello, Freddie Porter with Porter &amp; Associates Engineering, representing John Ball fans Homes. As a sub...I'm the engineer for the project. I can answer any questions you might have. I'm not sure if appropriate time to respond to the question about the signal is now or if we should do that later. Would you like me to provide a little bit of response now?
It would be after we hear opposition.
After, okay.
Yes.
All right. So I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not a time to express your opinion on the matter. It is a time to ask questions.
Sorry, I was stuck on that.
Commissioner Neal.
Okay. I'm looking at the maps, that one, and I just want to make sure I understand completely that this entire subdivision here is what's being proposed. Correct? Okay. So my question is, right?
Levin Street.
Yeah, Levin Street. Is that an exit onto Cottonwood right there?
Yes, ma'am. That's an exit onto Cottonwood.
Okay. And looking at the map, it doesn't appear to be that there's a plan for a light, a stoplight there, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There will be a median constructed there. That particular street is limited to a right turn in or a right turn out, so there will be no...oops, excuse me, crossing onto the other side of the street.
Okay.
So that's why there's no signal proposed. There's actually a signal that was constructed by the Del Oro High School across the street towards the north end of our project where the sump is shown, and then they have a signal at the intersection with Cottonwood and Panama. Actually, it's Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, south, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard now. So there...yeah, so there's two signals with crosswalks there, and so that...those would be utilized for access to cross the street to the schools.
And you were right that it's Cottonwood. That's something that is...there's some confusion around that. We've discussed that.
Is it not?
It's likely something that'll...
It's still Cottonwood.
It's likely something that'll be come back, you know, but for now, it's technically Cottonwood.
Okay.
Yep, so you're right.
All right.
Okay. All right. Further question. When the school was being built, did the developer, I guess, collaborate with the school on what the best traffic and pedestrian control would be for this little strip of land, of street between Panama and...I think that's Pacheco down there, right?
Should I work on that or is that something that...I'm not familiar with the high school plans very particularly. We didn't work on that, but I know that as part of the design process, there are traffic signal warrants that are done and studies to determine where, you know, signals are appropriate, but I think public works staff might better handle that.
And they will be required to construct sidewalks.
Sidewalks, okay.
Yes, along the frontage.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll save my comments for the comment section, and then maybe we can have some more discussion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be...oh, yeah, you have one. Sorry. Sorry.
They took it off the mic.
Oh, you are right. It is gone.
What's the price point of these homes?
Well, unfortunately, I'm just an engineer, so I'm not the best person to ask this question, but I would imagine in the lower price range. There's smaller lots, you know, single-family residences, and I honestly don't know what they go for in this neighborhood, but I'm guessing probably in the $200,000 range.
Mr. Johnson, do these feed to any of our arena numbers?
Yes, they do.
To which category?
I would have to look at the density per acre. More towards the higher income level. I mean, it doesn't go...it doesn't go towards the lower moderate income numbers. Goes more towards the medium and high.
Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step to the podium. Each side will only have five minutes, so make your comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of the previous speakers to ensure that everyone wishing to provide a rebuttal comment has a chance to do so. I will now...yeah. Sorry. Does anyone wish to speak? There's rebuttal. There's a timer. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action. Does any commissioners have any comments or questions?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Now's my chance to say what was on my mind when I took this thing off of consent. I'm just looking at this map and anticipating now that there's a high school there that the kids will be cutting across Cottonwood to go into that neighborhood, right into that intersection, and I don't, you know, know what it...what makes the most sense, you know, with that being a only right and only left median that might...and then this is a question for staff that might kind of mitigate some of our concerns in terms of vehicles, but what about the students? What about the pedestrian traffic?
With that, the pedestrians would have to walk south to where the signalized intersection is for the crosswalk.
Can you tell me how far that is between Levin and Panama? What's the distance between those two points?
Trying to look at it, but I believe the school building is in the southwest corner of their site, so they're closer to the main intersection, so I think they can control where they walk, like if they let them out.
Looks to be about 600 feet.
Okay. Which breaks down to...it's how many miles in a feet? A tenth of a mile?
Just over a tenth.
Oh, okay. Well, that's not bad. That's not bad. I'm just wondering if people or students living in this subdivision would be jaywalking, and if it made sense...let me look at the other map, what's around it, because it looks like, well, there's a stoplight there at Pacheco. So between...is that Pacheco the northern border of...of this...no, what is that, that yellow line across the top?
The yellow line there is just the property boundary.
Okay, got it. And then Pacheco's all the way the next lineup? Is that what that is?
I think Pacheco is further north.
Oh, okay. I don't know why, which map I was looking at, or probably Google Maps where it looked like that. Okay. Well, seeing that it's only 600 feet, it looks like a substantial distance to me for students coming from that school to...I'm pretty sure they're going to have some jaywalking there going across that road. I don't know what we can do to prevent it, but besides putting a light signal there at Levin Street halfway through the subdivision, but besides that, I don't know how you would prevent the kids from jaywalking. And this...and...Del Oro is just below Levin, or doesn't...doesn't it cross over the top of that one, too? Like, isn't the school kind of centered there?
It is.
Yeah. It is.
It's below Levin.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are going to be kids jaywalking there. You want to say something? Sure.
So the school's boundary actually matches about our northern boundary. I think there's some sort of parking lot or playfield or something up on that end. So in the aerial photo, you can see the buildings there, but that other portion up to the north is also part of the Del Oro's campus, and they have a traffic signal at the...towards the north end of our boundary as well that's existing that the school put in, and there will be a crosswalk there. There will be a crosswalk on both ends of our property, so that's only going to be closer to maybe 400 to 500 feet to the north end. So there will be an option in both directions from the street to a crosswalk.
And one last question. What's the speed limit on that...on that street right there? Yeah, but what about after school? When kids are present, right? And people only do it when they see buses and a lot of traffic.
We would have to look that up, but it's possibly 55.
Yeah, so my request for staff would be to slow the traffic down since there's a residence, since...is there...is there a brick wall going up? I guess there is against the back of this. I'm just concerned about there being two schools here now and that still being a 55 speed...speed limit with no traffic light for kids, however many, even just one really, to cross across a street that's 55 miles per hour.
I'm sorry, I must...did I miss the question? I would say there is a block wall on both streets, yes.
Right. So I suppose what I'm...what I'm saying is that's a...that's pretty high speed for the current now updated use. It was old dirt roads about a year and a half, two years ago, right? There was no schools there, there was no sub neighborhood there. I think that's quite fast for it to be a street...a street where the school exit and no...in the middle of this road, no...no stoplight for kids to cross. So I guess I'm engaging staff on a discussion about what we can do to mitigate the danger of the combination of having no stoplight there and a high-speed limit. I know that is 25 miles per hour when children are present, is the language. However, after-school programs, getting out of football practice or whatever, kids crossing this road, it's...it's...to me, it seems like a dangerous situation.
That would be a discussion we're going to have to have with the city traffic engineer and the public works director. That's not anything we can answer right now to even offer a reduced speed for this section. I can't offer that for this project right now. That's something that we'd have to, again, go with the city traffic engineer.
And the possibility of adding another light there and not having that be a median stretching all the way across, but having a crosswalk there?
Again, we would have to get with the city traffic engineer and see if a light is warranted there at that intersection, or not intersection, but at that egress and ingress point, and see if that...again, if that is warranted for that area.
So I would not be in support just because that's not a question that's been asked or maybe even something that's been considered. I cannot support the track map as proposed under those circumstances. It seems to be a beautiful development, but I think this should be tabled for more questions and answers about how to protect the kids that will be jaywalking across that 55 miles per hour zone. And this is not something that I had the opportunity to discuss with you, Mr. Johnson or else I would have, but I'm...my vote would be to table it, answer those questions, and then re-vote...vote on it again later. The applicant got their application in, so we can do that.
So Commissioner Neal, the hearing was closed already, so we would have to refer it back to staff and bring it at a later date.
What we would need is a motion, and then your commission would motion.
That's my motion. My motion would be to refer this back to staff for consideration of safety as related to that intersection and the speed limit now that this...there's a school here and a proposed, you know, residential units. So I make a motion to refer it back to staff.
Will you give a second?
I can say, Vice Chair Bashir Tash, you'll need...you need to request a second if there is a second.
Yeah, is there a second? And if there is none, ask for another motion?
Then we'd be looking for another motion.
Can we reopen this up for discussion now?
We cannot. We already closed the hearing. So you either move on with referring it back to staff or you vote on the item as it stands on the agenda. Currently, you have a motion to refer it back to staff.
Well, to be clear, this was emailed to us on Friday last week, right?
I believe so.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'm still unclear why staff and the public works don't have an answer to the question, because at some point, somebody would have had to know what the traffic speed limit was on that street and what the requirement was for traffic.
If you'd like to take an intermission, we can find out what the speed limit is on that street, but it may be premature to just say we're going to automatically reduce that section to 35 miles per hour at all times, because without...from going from 55 down to 35 and then back up to 55 can pose some hazards in itself.
It was designed...just to be clear, the street was designed with the school in mind. We were looking at it with the school on one side and the development on the other side, and that's when we have the two signals in the school requested it, the north one for their school buses, so kids walk back and forth.
I guess I'm a little confused on why we would refer it back to staff instead of answering the questions. I don't know. Does it...does it affect the developer if we refer this back to staff? Will it come back here in two weeks? I mean, what are we doing to the developer and the people with the application?
You're delaying a decision for them to move forward is all you're doing. If you continue it, you continue it to a date certain. If you feel that there's information that's valuable that we can bring back for you to make a decision, that's fine. If you refer it back, then they have to re-advertise, repost the site, and you're talking, you know, six weeks, two months delay.
And I would just add that because we closed the hearing, we can't set it to a certain date, and it'll have to be re-noticed because the hearing already closed.
I don't recall us saying the hearing was closed. I think...oh, it was. Oh, okay. So, and that's when we commented, started commenting. Well, it's up to you guys, but I made my motion. If there's not a second, that's fine, but it is a major concern for me.
So either we get a...we get a second for the referring back to staff or we get a motion to approve the item or deny.
Vice Chair Bashir Tash, may I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, there's no talk button here.
I know. No, absolutely. Please.
What specific information would you all like to see in a public hearing? So I mean, I just...if...if we're going to go to the great length to...as to delay this for information that we can't have right now, let's be clear what we need, because if we can't identify what we need, then we shouldn't be bothering with that.
I've raised my concern, and I made a motion to refer this back to staff for staff to take a look with the traffic division regarding this exit... take a look with the traffic division regarding this exit here onto Cottonwood, since that's a residence now across from a high school, safety of not having a traffic light there. And also take a look at the speed limit and look at safety for the students with regard to the speed limit adjacent, for the high school being adjacent now to a proposed residential
I was just noting that it may be, we have separation distances between traffic signals, so traffic signal probably will not go there. Maybe you could put in, you know, some, some flashing lights or anything. But also, we don't want to, without a crosswalk in there, you don't want to arbitrarily put something there where it's going to, you know, lend towards jaywalking.
Okay, so then my question for staff is, what do you do to mitigate the risk of students jaywalking across a 55 mile per hour street? That's what I'm asking. If you can't do a stoplight, which you just said that we can't, right? And, and so I'm asking for your support. And...
We can, we can look at that.
Okay, thanks.
That's all I can say right now, is I don't have an answer for you right now. Jaywalking's not illegal necessarily right now in the state of California as of January 1st. So we can go back with our city engineer and look and see if there's any way to reduce the speed less than what's required during, when schoolchildren are present of 25 miles an hour.
I'd like to.
And to be clear, I'm not, I'm not saying jaywalking in the sense of criminalizing crossing the street. I'm saying jaywalking in the sense of insurance safety of the children that will definitely cross this road without a guarded cross.
I'd like to. I understand what Commissioner Neal is trying to do, and I, I empathize with it, I understand that, and I support it. But at the same time, I don't want to hold this project up. And so what I would propose is that we approve this project and ask staff to meet with the developer and discuss these issues and, you know, try, they're going to have to do something. Somebody had to think about, they built a high school right there, so it's not the first time they thought about what the speed limit is on that street. So, you know, the speed limit's going to be what the speed limit's going to be, and there's going to be houses here, and there's going to be a high school across the street. So I would like to move this project forward by approving this project with some kind of caveat that the developer will meet with the city and talk to, tell them about what can be done on that street. And then, I don't know what the, how it comes back to us for just the information or what. I don't want to have to come back and vote on it again, but I would like to know if somebody actually did something.
Absolutely. We can provide a report on the outcome of those discussions.
All right, so my motion will be to approve this project as is, with a condition that the developer meet with the city and discuss the traffic on that street. Is that sufficient for Commissioner Neal?
Yeah, and I...
In light, without having...
It's a new motion. It's a new motion.
Does that work?
Well...
Does that work? Is that a condition or no?
It's a request, right? So yes. But it's not going to be a condition on the actual map.
Yeah, it's not a condition, it's a request. So it's a motion with a request.
I'll, I'll second that. That works for me. The only thing that I'll add is, is that staff take a look and see, do we have any other schools, you know, that with ingress and egress onto a 55 mile per hour road? And if so, what was done in those areas to mitigate pedestrian traffic and to mitigate any risk to students cross, that may be crossing the street into a residential development?
Sure. Stockdale High comes to mind. That's 55 right there. But we can look into that and report back. And now ours, are you also asking for East Panama Lane, or just Cottonwood?
There's a light on East Panama there, and the stretch is not as long. It doesn't appear to be. But the exact amount, I can't tell from the drawing.
We'll, we'll report back.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion?
We have a motion.
And we have a second?
And we have a second.
Waiting for the chairman. You want me to hit his abstaining button?
Motion passes with chair cater abstaining with request for developer to meet with the
Limbo? I think it's a great project, and I drove out there, and they had built a whole high school and junior high school out there. There's no houses. So this is definitely something that's needed out there, so. And it's obvious that somebody thinks there's going to be a lot of growth out there, because they built two schools. So it looks good so far.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Does staff have any communication items?
Yes, we will have a meeting on March 2nd. There'll be quite a few projects on that agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item eight, commission comments.
Does any commissioner have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for their patience with my newness to this role, and just understanding that I'm always concerned about the safety of the residents of our city, especially the little ones that can't, you know, come up here and speak for themselves. So thank you to the developer also for entertaining my questions and for entertaining the proposal to meet with city staff to talk about safety and traffic considerations for the adjacent schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Did you, oh, you looked like you were going to, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item nine, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:08. Have a great evening.